Rep. Solomon is in a meeting with us.
All right. In that case, we are going to open up a public hearing on House Bill 2758A. Cheyenne.
Madam Chair, members of the committee, House Bill 2758A requires at least two members of the Oregon Liquor Control Commission to have backgrounds in public health. It declares emergency as effective on passage. There was a one no vote in the House Committee, and 17 no votes off the House floor. There's no revenue or fiscal impact.
Thank you so much. Representative Solomon?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. So, good afternoon, Chair Gelsar, Vice Chair Anderson, and members of the committee. For the record, I'm Janine Solomon, the state representative for House District 30, which includes areas of Banks, North Plains, Hillsborough, and Aloha Beaverton. So, I come before you today in support of House Bill 2758A. The bipartisan bicameral bill would ensure that two members of the Oregon Liquor Control Commission have a background in public health. It has an emergency clause, only so that as current members on the, on, uh, current members' time on the commission expires at the end of this year, new commissioners with this background could be appointed to fulfill that requirement. The inclusion of two members that have a background in public health is an important component to serving on a commission that regulates the sale and service of alcoholic beverages and recreational and medical marijuana. So, alcohol kills five people a day in Oregon. It is the largest substance use disorder in Oregon, and it is the third-leading cause of preventable death in Oregon. Echo Northwest recently released a report showing that in 2019, Oregon's total cost of excessive drinking was $4.8 billion. And the Alcohol Drug Policy Commission, of which I am a member, estimates that untreated addiction costs the state $6.7 billion per biennium. The Alcohol Drug Policy Commission is a key component of the strategic, of their strategic plan, is tasked with developing a statewide coordinated system of substance use policies and services. The alcohol, I'm sorry, the Oregon Liquor Control Commission is a partner agency in this work, and the ADPC is working with the OLCC on how to incorporate public health information into their discussions that shape policy in regard to alcohol and marijuana sales. This can be seen as a next step in the progression of that work. The requirement to have two members of the OLCC with a background in public health is intentionally broad to make sure that this is not a burden to the OLCC to find members. We feel it will bring a greater degree of the understanding and expertise around this issue. When you look at governing boards and commissions across all areas of the state, or even at the local level, you want to see people at those boards that have experience in that realm of work. They can lend to the conversation. That is very evident on the Alcohol Drug Policy Commission that I serve on. We have medical doctors, public health professionals, addiction and recovery specialists, law enforcement, judiciary, elected officials, all people that have a different lens pertaining to alcohol and drug use that come together to discuss issues the commission faces. Having members of the OLCC that have a background in public health is an essential component to that work and connects those that are making the rules with the public health aspects of those rules and regulations. So, House Bill 2758A is simply asking for those with a public health lens to be added to the table, to make it more representative of the subjects that they are responsible for, and to provide a greater balance among the members. Colleagues, I thank you for this time and your attention, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Solomon. It looks like Senator Taylor has a question for you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Gelsar. Good afternoon, Representative Solomon. Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
And I shouldn't be surprised that, once again, you have a fabulous bill you're bringing forward. So, thank you. I support the measure. The, uh, what I, the question I had was, do these, just said a couple of things. One, is this, um, are these two positions confirmed by the Senate?
They would still go through the same process. In fact, there's like five different, oh, I'm sorry, Chair Gelsar, members of the committee. Thank you so much. I just get so excited. I just get rolling. Um, I, I just wanted to, um, this would still go through the same process, and there are still, you know, I think, five different ways that somebody can become a commissioner. They can self kind of apply. They can go through the governor. People can recommend them. So, all of that is still the same. All that we're asking for is that those people that come on have that public health background, because if you look at the current members, um, they don't have that lens of experience. So.
Follow-up?
Follow-up?
So, I completely support the idea of having someone with a public health lens on the OLCC board, um, for the reasons that you stated. It is a public health issue. Um, I would also argue that, um, that could be kind of broad, and I was just curious if there was Senate confirmation, so we could have a little check and balance to make certain that the most appropriate person, when, when time goes on and all of us are no longer serving in the legislature, that there's, uh, you know, a way to make certain that the right public health background, since it's such a broad, um, field. I was just curious if it was going through the Senate confirmation process, but you, it seems that you think it does.
It will. So, Chair Gelsar and Senator Taylor, it will still, still go through that process. Um, there is, just as the, the current commission has certain requirements, like, uh, you know, you have to have a candidate from eastern Oregon. You have to have a candidate from certain region. Um, only one can be representative from the restaurant and alcohol industry. Um, different things like those type of stipulations. So, this one, um, basically, we wanted to make sure that it was broad, because it could mean that somebody was a pediatrician, or is a pediatrician, or maybe was retired. It could mean that somebody worked in the public health, um, public health department at a county level, um, or something like that, just to be able to, to lend to that conversation when those, um, different rulemaking and things that are happening, or lend to the legislative, um, process when, when, uh, when bills are coming, um, our way, to be able to reflect, um, some of that public health knowledge to the impacts.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks for the clarification.
It's a good bill.
Thank you, Senator Taylor. Senator Lieber?
Uh, thank you, Chair Gelsar. Representative Solomon, thank you so much. Um, I know we talked about this before, but I can't remember the answer as to why did you have two, two people? What was the thought process behind having two? Because it's a, it's a fairly small board. Um, so just want to understand that thought process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Gelsar, and thank you, Senator Lieber, for that question. Um, I think what we really looked at is, um, number one, it's, it's seven members, and so really looking at making sure that when you kept the public health, um, definition broad, I mean, we didn't scope it down to something that said you must have alcohol and drug, you know, um, addiction specialist or something. But to make it that broad, you could actually then have someone with two varying different experiences. You could have someone that does potentially have had that, um, specialist kind of background or profession, but also somebody who maybe is a nurse, nurse practitioner or former, uh, that can lend to that conversation. And I think that we chose two specifically because, um, I greatly respect the work that the state is doing, especially being a new member on the Behavioral Health, um, Committee on the House side. The work that we are doing to truly address, um, addiction in this state, whether it is making sure that we have resources through the ballot measure initiative and Senate Bill 755, or looking at how we're supporting people through 988 and getting them support where they need it. All of those things are important, and I think another aspect, or that tool in the toolbox to address the growing concern, as I shared some statistics, was that we need to make sure that we're, this is another tool, just another lens to looking at the, looking at the, um, looking at the issues and the things that are coming before them on the alcohol drug, on the OLCC, to make sure that, um, they can share that, that background to those situations.
Great.
Follow-up real quick?
Follow-up?
Thank you. And, uh, did we ever get a definition on, um, what, public health? I mean, there's, just a background in public health is a pretty broad definition. I didn't know if you were able to figure out if there's a definition around, around that, um, at all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Gelsar and Senator Lieber. Um, I didn't get a definition specific to that public health, um, only because we did want to make it broad enough so that we didn't have a definition there that really put something in a box, because it could be, like I said, it could be somebody who works at the county level. It could be somebody who works as a, you know, um, I have a former, a former doctor that lives in my district that lends a lot of his information, his background to a lot of the bills that come forward, and he shares that with me. So, it could be anywhere, um, to, to that type of profession as well. Yeah. Let me know if you have any other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Rep. Solomon? Seeing none, I understand that we also have Representative Leaf here, who would like to say a few words. Representative Leaf?
Good afternoon, Chairs Gelsar, Vice Chair Anderson, members of the Senate Committee. Uh, I'm Representative Gary Leaf, representing House District 2, which is southern Oregon, Douglas, Jackson, and Josephine Counties. Uh, I'm proud to be a chief sponsor on House Bill 2758. You know, alcohol is a single, single largest cost driver and killer related to addiction in Oregon. Uh, I think this bill will help decrease harmful consumption of alcohol, uh, through policy introduction and implementation. Uh, by requiring 25% of the membership of OLCC to have a public health or drug and alcohol prevention background, the bill takes into consideration both public health of our communities, uh, and the continued economic strength of the alcohol industry. OLCC is responsible for crafting alcohol and cannabis policy that impacts how our state is able to address substance use disorder, alcohol use disorder, uh, in public health. And we have experts, uh, on the ADPC that understand the addiction treatment and recovery support services. Uh, why are there no experts at the decision-making table of the OLCC that understand the intersection between public health and how these policies work? Well, it's clear that OLCC has helped grow Oregon's local alcohol industry, uh, and has made it a big part of the Oregon brand, uh, with the unintended human and economic consequences that we're experiencing that outweigh the economic benefits. And as you know, OLCC contributes over a half a billion dollars to the general fund. OHA estimates that binge drinking alone costs Oregon taxpayers $3.5 billion a year. Uh, according to the ADPC, untreated addiction is costing the state $6.7 billion per biennium. Alcohol kills five people per day in Oregon. That's five times the rate of all the drug overdoses combined. Uh, I believe we need people with expert, uh, uh, understanding in public health to keep an eye out for the concerns and health of our Oregonians, and this legislation that addresses the state's strategic efforts to tackle this alcohol-led addiction crisis. Uh, thank you, Chair Gelsar and committee members.
Thanks for coming over to join us. Are there any questions for Representative Leaf? I don't see any, but I'm really glad you came, and I hope we see you more.
Oh, great. I just got beat up in my last committee, so this feels pretty good.
We strive to be the nice committee.
Thank you.
Right. Next time, maybe we'll have a puppy or something. Um, so, next up, we have Solara Salazar.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you all. Um, I am very excited about, um, this bill. I have worked in the alcohol and drug treatment field.
Are you introducing yourself for the record?
Yes. My name is Solara Salazar.
Perfect.
So, um, I've worked in the alcohol and drug treatment field for 13 years here in Oregon, and so I definitely appreciate hearing the numbers on what it costs taxpayers and the impact that alcohol has on the state, um, and alcohol-related deaths. But for me, it's deeply personal. You know, it's, I, I work with, um, people with substance use disorders and alcoholism, and so I get to see, um, you know, families' lives who are ripped apart, and I see when policies, um, you know, are, are harmful in Oregon, uh, as they pertain to alcohol. And so, I just really encourage anybody who's on the fence to, um, to see the importance of having specialists in public health be on the board. Um, you know, in the time that I've worked in this field, I would like to say that our state has progressively gotten better in addressing the addiction crisis and alcoholism. However, uh, it's progressively gotten worse and worse every single year. And so, really, I believe that this year, next year, we need to make some major headway at changing policy to address the crisis that we have in Oregon that's alcoholism, and this is a really great start. So, I give my full support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for joining us today. Really appreciate it. Next up, we have Sonia Grove.
Hi. I'm Sonia Grove, and I'm a constituent of Senator Taylor. I am the mother of a 53-year-old who died on April 5th, 2020, of alcohol-related causes. My son was a casualty. I am so sorry. I could do this so easily. Within a public health crisis of alcohol addiction, I am certain each of you know the magnitude of the human and economic costs of alcohol. And you've said many of the statistics that I was going to repeat. My son was 53 years old, educated, loved, and attended AA more than I could count. His disease progressed silently, as he could profess to wanting recovery desperately, then would relapse, avoid treatment or counseling, and finally, he contracted pneumococcal pneumonia, which affected every part of his respiratory system. He drove to a rundown hotel on 82nd Avenue the day of the pandemic lockdown and never returned home. No one could believe that John's alcoholism killed him, but I watched the progress up close, and it is devastating. HB 2758 seems straightforward and reasonable, guaranteeing that two board members of the OLCC have public health background. As I read through the backgrounds of current board members, it is obvious they are public servants who give of their time to what could be considered a straightforward topic, access to alcohol and cannabis. Most people are not affected by the disease of alcoholism. Thus, we love the wine and beer industry in Oregon, but the disease of alcoholism is cunning and deadly. It killed a wise, caring, and respected man in his 50s, and there are many more like John. I have a master's degree in public administration, and I understand the role of a board. Objectivity is a certain goal in any board, but this crisis requires a focus on addiction in this state as never before. If liquor and cannabis in Oregon were seen through the eyes of two educated public health members, there would be, hopefully, a deeper understanding, focus, and strategic planning for taming an epidemic. There are many programs and state agencies that focus upon addiction, so it would make sense that a public health focus would create collaborations and understandings that could seriously cripple this epidemic of death and destruction to so many families. I thank you all for your hard work as legislators. I also want to thank the chief sponsors of this bill, which I believe has major implications for decisions made by OLCC, and hopefully shines a spotlight on a public crisis that leaves families like mine indescribably sad and knowing well the devastation of the disease of alcoholism. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and I'm so sorry for your loss. I can't now imagine how difficult it is to come to a committee and talk about it, but thank you for honoring John that way and sharing a little bit about him and talking about why, um, it's so important that we really address the, the issue of alcohol access in Oregon. I greatly appreciate it. Are there questions, Senator Taylor? It looks like you.
Thank you, Chair Gelsar. I also just wanted to say I'm sorry for your loss, and thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, we have Heidi Wallace.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chair and committee members, for the opportunity to testify today. Um, I wasn't expecting to come off of, starting to cry, um, so I just want to say thank you, Sonia, for, you know, sharing that as well. Um, I was not expecting that and that was, um, and yet, that's what I experience every day. Uh, my name's Heidi Wallace, and I am testifying in support of House Bill 2758. In my work, I lead the Hazelton Betty Ford Foundation's treatment program in Oregon, and my colleagues and I are on the front lines responding to this public health crisis of alcohol use in our communities every day. I've been a treatment provider in the Portland metro area within Oregon for over 24 years, and I see firsthand the impact alcohol has had on individuals, families, and our communities. Alcohol remains, and you've heard that today, the primary drug of choice and the number-one reason people seek treatment, um, across our state and across our country. Um, you've given a lot of statistics, statistics already given today, but I'm going to give you a couple more, um, that weren't discussed. Um, early survey results last year in 2020 showed that 14% increase in alcohol consumptions and 41% increase in binge drinking amongst women in 2020 during this pandemic. And that is most certainly just the tip of the iceberg. The consequences of the increase in alcohol consumption in particular, and the corresponding reasons for it, like stress, anxiety, depression, and mental health, will certainly be broad and long-lasting. Now, more than ever, Oregonians need people with a public health expertise on the Oregon Liquor Control Commission to fulfill its duty to oversee the education and enforcement of the state's liquor and marijuana regulations. Without it, the state is at risk of being left ill-equipped and to lead and shape its approach to the life and death consequences of alcohol and marijuana policies, and perhaps the most consequential time in generations. Thank you for your consideration of my testimony today, and I again ask for your support of House Bill 2758A. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions? Not seeing any. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Steve Marks.
Chair Gelsar, members of the committee. For the record, I'm Steve Marks, Executive Director of the OLCC, and thank you for this opportunity to testify in this bill, um, and appreciate the devastation that alcohol brings to so many lives. Uh, people know, my dad was a clinical social worker and did a lot of drug and alcohol, uh, treatment in his professional life, so I've been aware of alcohol for a very long time and its devastation. My, my chairman did, I must say, he has concerns about the governance and composition of alcohol, and whether, uh, maybe two members is appropriate, or thinking about this. And, as Chair Gelsar knows, that I came from a experience working in a governor's office for Governor Kitzner, and the appointments process and working through. So, I want to just raise those issues. We do not, as a department, have a position on this bill, but wanted to at least provide some context for thinking. I think rightly so. This commission expanded from five members to seven, I think in 2017. Two members were added at large, as was described. We have one, uh, member that can have a conflict and represent the alcohol industry, which is, you know, a pretty diverse industry, whether you're talking about manufacturers or restaurants, or agents, or distillers, or winemakers. Um, so we have one spot that represents those different issues on a, on a changing basis. Um, the, the work of the commission, you know, and I've been there now seven and a half years. Commissioners spend a lot of time selecting stores. Uh, that is a big part of the hands-on work commissioners do. The other part of the work that commissioners do, a lot of hands-on work, is adjudicating, setting penalties and adjudicating penalties. Um, and they make decisions about that. For context, Washington State uses a three-member commission, um, that spends paid half-time, and those three members do adjudications of alcohol policy. That said, the commission does approve, uh, all of our rules, right? They're, they're not delegated to, um, the director. They do delegate a lot of issues to me in settling cases, uh, but in policy and rulemaking, the, the commission is definitely defended. We have had interest in expansion before. There is not a cannabis member that represents the industry with conflicts. There was an attempt, or, or back early on, uh, when we expanded to seven members and went east and west of the mountain stat, I remember who represented cannabis. Um, we have, as a commission, I think, gone down. When we were five members, we were an 80% ethnic board. Now, we're, my rough math, 40%? Ethnicity on the commission board, but there are a lot of qualifications that go into being a member and what the, what the job is.
What do you mean by?
Racial minority group, uh, representation on the commission. So, initially, we were 80% when I first got there, one of the most diverse commissions in the state. Uh, and now, we're still diverse, very diverse, but, uh, we were definitely diverse and proud of it. Um, and, and, uh, yeah, I was at the time, uh, you remember, uh, when I started here, Rob Patress was the chair. Now, it's Chairman Paul Rosenbaum. Um, and I can also say that there is a, there is a public health concern. You know, we regulate the sale and service. We've got a responsibility to raise revenue for the state. Our store, you know, availability for distilled spirits is amongst the, uh, highest per population in the country. I'm not talking about beer and wine. I'm talking about distilled spirits. At one store per 15,000, a lot of states are certainly under 10,000, even much lower, to the 2,000 level of store availability per population. We've dealt with a volley crisis, which is public health recently. We've been enforcing the governor's mask mandate, uh, as, well, I'll say it here, the, the mask police. Um, we set standards for the dosages of marijuana in conjunction with OHA and others. Uh, but I would just point out, as you're thinking about this, the commission also has to have party diversity, right? The governor's party can only have one additional person, right? Uh, and, um, and, um, so it's a, it's a challenge, right, to get appointments with the congressional district expansion. I don't know how the legislature plans. I'm looking at those changes, um, coming forward. Um, so, wanted to give you some of that flavor of what the commission is, uh, what we're doing. I would note, um, for the public health concerns that come in, and we have, um, made some recent, particularly around alcohol, some focus changes, uh, right? We recently instituted minimum floor pricing for distilled spirits, in an attempt to raise the bottom shelf distilled, you know, cheap vodka, Everclear, all went up in price by container size, um, by proof of alcohol. So, that was a good move. It's an initial start for us, and the things we can do as a agency set to sell liquor and provide for its sale and service in the community. Um, we, um...
So.
Yes.
So, I hear you explaining the, and I'm sorry, I just, we've got a bunch of people still to, to move there, and I appreciate the background of the board. So, I, what I was trying to understand was the concern of, of having, uh, people with a public back, health background on the board. And it occurs to me that we probably have, uh, people with a public health background in all political parties and, and every part of the state. So, that's, that's one question, whether that's the concern. The second is, I also think that we have, um, people with public health backgrounds in, um, all genders, all races, all ethnicities, and, and religions. So, I wasn't sure if that was the concern. And then, I wanted to make sure that I understood correctly. Currently, there is specifically a space allowed for the alcohol industry, but not for specifically consumers, or addiction, or, or public health?
No, there's not, and there wasn't, as there's no need for the cannabis side, which we've taken on since the commission came into place and they advocated for that. But no, there is not one for public health. And I think, you know, just by way of that, we've, just a few things on that issue, because I want to make sure about that, right? We got, we coordinate with OHA, and they have an entire public health, the division focused on this. We hired a public health officer, uh, inside OLCC to help advise us and coordinate with them and the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission. We are part of Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission's plan for our roles. We are part of Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission's plan for our roles within it, and I think that's very properly placed focus for us. And I had one more point that I'm forgetting on the public health side, but there's significant amount of coordination there. And I'd also say, members of the current commission, as you point out, wouldn't have a professional public health background, but certainly they've been involved with operating and nonprofit, I think it's associated with Good Sam, the chairman, has worked a long time with their drug and alcohol and treatment focused. And I'm trying to call it a program is what I want to say, but it's their work in that. So, you know, whether that qualifies, how that fits with the board is a question. People are concerned, you know, that we don't have our agents who are a big part of our store complexion. We don't have county commissioner, a city, you know, represented spot, and they have had concerns with, you know, our decisions to license different businesses in their communities and otherwise. So I think my point is just that, you know, as you make qualifications, and not that public health is important, in fact, in some ways, I'm making the health the case. We're making the case that we are involved in a lot of public health concerns. We're not so much directly in addictions and treatment, right? We create money maybe for those things, but our policies are there, and we are getting a lot of new fronts in cannabis and other areas where we are involved in making those decisions.
Right. And so with that, it just seems to me that the decision makers, if, as you've argued, you're really wading deep into public health decisions, I'm having a hard time understanding what the drawback is or what harm would be caused by a public health person. And then the second question is, if the argument is you can't have representation of everybody on an eight-member board, would it make sense to remove the preference and the set aside for somebody that's conflicted within the alcohol industry? Like, if we're not going to have public health, why would we have that? Why would we have the industry?
Yeah, I don't think I'm here to take a position. I want to point out this thing's in your governance of the board. But, you know, we have our role in it, and I think those are permanent, all pertinent points of view that you just shared, Chairman Gilser, on it. I would just say, having come from the experience of being in the governor's office, right? At different times, you want different things, and you always look for that flexibility, as confirmed by the Senate. But obviously, these are your choices as a legislature, as a committee, to advance the kind of representation you would like for governance on that board. I think there's a concern that we have enough for representation on the board, but I'm not taking a position on behalf of the agency that's good or bad, one or two. Those are your decisions for consideration. I did want to at least have you have some thought about the governance you want in the future and how we balance our role with the rest of all of state governments' role on the south side there.
Thanks. Thank you. And Sandra Taylor, I think, has a question.
Thank you, Chair Gelsner. So, Mr. Marks, these comments are kind of throwing me off here. Thank you for coming here today and to discuss this. But I'm in support of this measure. Alcoholism is a disease. We are, as a state, we go through a process to have regulations. We have a licensing process. We're in charge, very much in charge of distributing it. People purchase it from us, and then unfortunately, some become addicted, and we know that can be devastating consequences. I'd say this bill is long overdue, and we should have been having a public health lens from the very beginning, and who knows where we would be. Different countries around the world have different relationships with alcohol, and in the United States, we have a very high alcoholism rate. The question I have is, I'm just wondering if you're ever in contact with the lottery? Before I was elected, I used to volunteer for Representative Tomei, who, of course, Senator Gelsner knew very well. And Representative Tomei, as Senator Gelsner will remember, it was very active in her concerns about, and then I, when I joined the legislature, I went on, picked up the torch and continued to work on lottery issues. And, boy, there needed to be a lot of changes in lottery because of individuals, unfortunately, becoming addicted to gambling. And I would say that there's a lot of similarities in, I'm not an addictions counselor, but it's my understanding there's a lot of similarities between alcoholism and addictions to gambling. And so I just want to make certain that OLLCC, I suspect that this bill will pass, and I suspect we will be seeing appointments of public health individuals. And I think that the reason this is being taken seriously now is because perhaps the feedback is that there needs to be a cultural shift. And just like had we had to go through this process that took, I don't know, Senator Gelsner, five, 10 years at lottery, took a long time, and they've made a lot of changes at lottery in order to be really thorough and communicate with the public about gambling addiction and how serious it is, there's still work to be done there. So I just hope, Mr. Marks, if you can shed some light on just what are the two or three things that have happened in the last few years that OLLCC or the board has done to make certain that decisions are being made noting the seriousness of alcoholism in society? I mean, I guess I, we don't need to go on and on, but I think the message is being sent that we're looking for a cultural shift.
Clearly. Chair Gelsner, members of the committee, for the record, Steve Marks. Thank you, Senator. A couple, I had the pleasure of working with Tomei. Governor Kitzauer introduced a measure to change the Oregon constitution for the lottery, so it wasn't to maximize revenue. I was the staffer that worked with her on carrying that, so very familiar with Representative Tomei and her work in the legislature. So, and I hadn't heard her name for a while. Appreciate that. You know, I think there's some things we do, but our lane that we look at as we make changes are really like, we're not the health folks, right? We're trying to do things to make sale and service safer. How that happens, how much liquor you're served, how much. And for our sales part of the system, one of the things that I'll note, these are wins for us inside it, although maybe not regarded as for the public health community. People buy liquor, most of our growth and revenue hasn't come from selling more volume through distilled spirits. I'm only talking about the distilled spirits sales. We are selling better, right? More expensive liquors, more expensive selling up, and that's generated revenue for the state, and certainly we have that mandate as well. But that is a win inside our system if we're keeping the volumes consistent or going down and actually making more money. Now, I know that's not regarded by the public health community as a big public health win, but for us, that's the kind of thing within our system we can achieve. The other part is to make sure that, you know, delivery to children is not allowed, and we've increased our penalties, both in alcohol and certainly in marijuana. We took them right to the highest level that we could initiate when we initially had a lot of underage sales when the program started retail. I'm happy to report those are in the 90s now. Alcohol's below that. So those are just a few things that we've had a focus on. We don't do very many. We don't have a budget for advertising. We don't do alcohol. What we do is alcohol education. And most recently, you know, we were interested in supporting additional education and permitting for third-party alcohol deliveries, which are occurring in the state and have for some time. So those are some of the things that we focused on most recently.
Thank you. And Sandra Lieber has a question.
Thank you, Chair Gelsner, Mr. Marks. I'm just wondering, when you do make policy decisions, how do you analyze the public health implications? Or I guess implicit in that question is you do analyze them, and now I'm not so sure that you are. So I'm trying to understand, are you analyzing the public health implications when you make policy decisions? And if you are, what information are you gathering to help you make those policy decisions?
So in the past year, with this new position we've hired around public health, they're coordinating, we're doing a public health impact for each policy rulemaking that we move forward, much like the economic analysis that you see in rulemaking, so that we do take a look at the statistics or the commentary or the implications from research with each one of those policy actions that we might be taking.
And that's a recent addition.
That is a recent addition. Yeah, we got the position this year. I can't remember if it was in our full budget or we redesigned and got that approved in the administrative process over this past.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Steve? I'm not seeing you. Thank you for being so generous with your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for giving it to me. I'm chair. Appreciate it.
All right. Take care. Next up, we've got Kathy McMinnis.
Hi.
Welcome.
Madam Chair and members of the committee, my name is Kathy McGinnis, and I live in Kaiser, Oregon. I am employee of the Salem Kaiser School District and have been for many years. But most importantly, that's not why I'm here. Yeah, I've seen a lot of sad things happen with parents and children around drugs and alcohol as an educator, but I'm here today as a parent. This is my daughter Katie. I too lost Katie to alcohol addiction. On Friday, May 28 of 2020, I hugged my daughter goodbye for the last time. But I'm not just here to be the voice for my daughter. These are two recent, out of the Statesman Journal, young men that went to South High and West Salem High School that lost their lives to alcohol abuse. Katie was in and out of the Salem Hospital 100 times the last year of her life, begging for help. I had to send my daughter to California to receive treatment because there was no place here in Oregon. The lack of treatment support, the lack of bed availability, the lack of beds, the lack of insurance support. I'm going to say something strong, and I hope it sticks. Alcohol abuse is a misunderstood and cruel disease. It is so misunderstood. On March 1, I woke up to the knock at my front door to a police officer and a chaplain, only to receive the news that my daughter had only been in treatment two days and lost her life. As a mother, first and foremost, I should have never have had to send my daughter out of state. I should have been able to send her somewhere in my neighborhood, in my community, for help. She begged for help. She would say, Mom, I don't want to be this way. Please help me. Sorry.
You're doing great. And it's okay to take a minute, all the time you need.
I'm going to wrap up. I urge you to support House Bill 2758 because it is very important that we have the individuals with the public health. As I was listening, also, I'm just going to circle back to one of the ladies that testified about how much alcohol abuse has gone up among women. It has. There is a horrendous amount, especially among young women, but not just women. I know it's men, too. I have to share something that's been very touching in my life this last year. A number of Katie's friends that are in all walks of life have invited me to come and sit in their meetings. I have gone and joined in those meetings. Those people are so humbling. I think each and every one of us on this earth should sit there with them. It is the most humbling experience as an individual because they are our fire chiefs, our nurses, our teachers, our doctors. There are people all around us that are seeking that support, love, and help. And I can't tell you how many times I heard, like I heard from my daughter, I thought I was going to die. So I just want to thank you for your support and your time.
Thank you, Kathy, so much for coming, and I am heartbroken by your story, and I'm so sorry for the loss of Katie. And I'm sorry that I didn't ask this of John's mom, Sonia, but, you know, we've talked about Katie, and clearly she's very loved. What is, you know, one of the beautiful things about Katie that brings you joy when you think about her? So we've got that here, too.
Well, I just want to share something with you really that's been really special. First of all, Katie had a tattoo on her foot that said, "One step at a time." She's also a twin. Her sister is a teacher in Salem Kaiser also. So this last, we just celebrated Katie's one-year anniversary, first heavenly birthday, and I'm involved in our community and set on different boards, and I have a real tender heart for the homeless and people in drug and alcohol addiction. And there's an organization in town called Simply Birthdays. Simply Birthdays is an organization that services five homeless shelters for kids and teens that are also in the Salem Kaiser School District that are homeless, and they give them birthdays. Well, Katie loved her birthdays. Two weeks before Katie died, she gave a birthday to a man that was in recovery that had never had a birthday. He was 24 years old, and he'd never had a birthday. So she went out and got him a balloon and a cake and a present, and she asked her sister and I if we would sing Happy Birthday to Daniel. And we said, yes, we'd love to. So Daniel came over, and we sang Happy Birthday to him. And Daniel cried. So on Katie's first heavenly birthday, we decided we were going to celebrate by asking our friends and families to join with us to give to Simply Birthdays. And in one hour, we raised over $700 and over $150 in gift cards and two vans full of toys for children. And so in honor of my daughter, I always say, "One step at a time."
One step at a time. Thank you so much, and thank you so much for sharing your story today. And I see that Sonia has popped back on. Sonia, would you like to say something? And if you do, I just need you to introduce yourself for the record again one more time.
Okay. I'm Sonia Grove. That's such a good question, Sarah. I try to say to many people about John, and those who knew him loved him. You know, this was not someone who didn't have some advantages. He was smart. He was very educated, and he was totally loved. He did not end up on Burnside, which there were points at which I thought he, in fact, could. He was a staunch member of AA. And I guess the thing I want to underscore is, and I thank Senator Taylor so much for the questions to Steve, because alcoholism is a cunning, horrible disease, and it is running amok. And unless we get some handle on it, you know, not only in, you know, on this commission, but in the state, I mean, the, so I think, you know, that has given me some level of peace. I'm, you know, we know that in grief, that giving back is important, and that's why I've sort of signed up with Oregon Recovers to do as much. sort of signed up with Oregon Recovers to do as much as I can because I think both Kathy and I have very compelling stories. They're real of people who were truly loved, who, no, no, John never touched any drug. It was alcohol. And the idea that the commission doesn't have any real responsibility in this is kind of stunning to me. You know, well, I could go on for hours. Anyway, you know, I just miss him. I mean, he was just a wonderful, wonderful son, and every day is just a little bit less because of that loss. And if I could help one family to avoid what this family has gone through, I will do it. And again, I want to thank all of you for, you know, your commitment, the person Heidi from Hazleton. Yeah.
Right. Well, thank you both so much for sharing with us today, for your powerful testimony, and thank you both very, very much. Next up, we have Nancy McMorris Addicks. You are muted, I think. There you go.
Thank you. I need a minute after that. I just have to acknowledge the incredible bravery of those two women. Chair Gelsor, Vice Chair Anderson, members of the committee. My name is Nancy McMorris Addicks. I'm a registered nurse and a certified nurse midwife in Salem. I'm speaking today in favor of House Bill 2758 on behalf of the Oregon Nurses Association. I have served on one, and I'm serving on another board/committee established by the legislature and appointed by the governor. Both the Oregon Educators Benefits Board and the Maternal Mortality and Morbidity Review Committee have a specific mention in statute as to qualifications for each member. These specifications assure that many perspectives are seated at the table, making for rich deliberation and improved decision-making abilities. It is consistent with other statewide boards and commissions to have specific requirements for OLCC members. Alcohol is a significant public health issue in Oregon. You've heard the financial impact numbers from Rep. Solomon. You've heard incredible stories of personal impact. In addition, the human cost of domestic abuse, suicide, job loss, inflict pain and suffering on families of alcoholics. The broad perspective of public health is needed at the table when decisions are made about alcohol control by the state. At a recent meeting with women's health colleagues, it was noted that alcohol abuse remains very difficult to diagnose. What's happening?
There you go. I think I fixed it.
Sorry. At a recent meeting with women's health colleagues, it was noted that alcohol abuse remains very difficult to diagnose and treat in pregnancy. While we have made strides to improve identification and treatment of other substance use and abuse in pregnancy, alcohol use and abuse flies under the radar. The impact on fetal development during pregnancy and social emotional development of the child are impacted by undiagnosed alcohol abuse. Assuring the broad perspective of public health experts who view social and health issues in the broader context in which they occur are essential on the OLCC. Please pass House Bill 2758 and send it to the Senate with a due pass recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Any questions? I'm not seeing any. Next up, we have Andrew Swanson.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Chair Gelsor, Vice Chair Anderson, members of the committee. My name is Andrew Swanson, and I'm here on behalf of Oregon Recovers in support of House Bill 2758. I'm also in recovery from addiction to heroin, methamphetamine and alcohol, and celebrated four years of continuous recovery last November. First, real quick, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to Sonia and Kathy for sharing their stories today of their loved ones. Also, I noticed before I signed on today that all of the written testimony for the bill has disappeared, all the previous written testimony before today from the first hearing. So I called tech support, and they said they would get that restored in the next few days, just so committee members are aware, there is a lot of written testimony from the House testimony, the House hearing earlier. Oregon Recovers is a coalition of people in recovery like myself, our friends and family members, and the addiction counselors and peers on the front lines of the addiction crisis. Our mission is to end Oregon's addiction crisis by transforming the state's fractured and incomplete addiction recovery healthcare system into a recovery-based continuum of care that recognizes addiction as a chronic condition that requires a lifetime of support. Oregon Recovers strongly supports House Bill 2758 and urges the committee to vote yes. While the mechanics of this bill are relatively simple, the long-term impacts it could have on the state's strategic efforts to address the alcohol-led addiction crisis are significant. Alcohol is a toxic addictive substance, and as such, is the single largest cost driver and killer relative to addiction in Oregon. Virtually all public health experts agree that access and regulation play an outsized role in any government's ability to curb harmful consumption like underage drinking and binge drinking. The OLCC and its commissioners have long been aligned with the alcohol industry, making them an outlier among the nation's liquor control agencies and control states. While it's clear that the alignment of the OLCC has certainly helped grow Oregon's local alcohol industry and made it part of the Oregon brand, the unintended human and economic consequences we are experiencing far outweigh the economic benefits. A recent report by Oregon Health Authority and Echo Northwest estimates that binge drinking alone costs Oregon taxpayers $4.8 billion a year. According to the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission, untreated addiction is costing the state $6.7 billion per biennium. In a letter addressed to the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission in August of 2020, alcohol industry representatives stated that the entire economic contribution of the alcohol industry in Oregon totals roughly $2 billion per year, leaving Oregon taxpayers with a huge deficit. Despite this expensive subsidy, the alcohol industry enjoys some of the lowest taxes in the nation. The human toll is worse. Alcohol kills now six people a day in Oregon, which is six times the rate of all drug overdoses combined. This puts an enormous burden on Oregon's public safety and healthcare systems, our cities and our counties. And I think it was already mentioned, but it's also the third-leading cost for preventable death in the state. The alcohol industry's overwhelming precedence in the OLCC board was never more clear than when the OLCC moved unilaterally to allow the home delivery of alcohol last spring at the beginning of COVID without ever consulting the Oregon Health Authority Public Health Division or the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission on the possible public health consequences of that decision, despite this same policy failing in the legislature the previous session. Furthermore, OLCC's rule changes contradicted CDC and World Health Organization recommendations that governments restrict access to alcohol during the pandemic. Simply put, there needs to be a greater degree of balance so that this agency can craft policy that is in the interest of all Oregonians. We now know that alcohol consumption, along with retail sales, have skyrocketed during the pandemic, presenting policymakers with an unprecedented behavioral health crisis in the coming months and years. Requiring that two of the seven commissioners have a public health background, we move toward achieving a balance between public health of our communities and the profit margins of the large alcohol conglomerates, which account for a large majority of alcohol sales in Oregon. Having experts at the table who can speak to the unintended public health and addiction consequences of alcohol and cannabis policies is a pragmatic and common sense approach to public policy. The intent of this bill is to ensure that these critical public health considerations are part of the larger conversation when OLCC makes rules, not to dominate the conversation, which is why we advocated for only two of the seven commissioners. I'll leave you with one final statistic. In the last two decades, we've seen the alcohol industry rapidly grow in Oregon, but we've also seen alcohol mortality rise 34% in the state. This, to me, demonstrates a clear failure on the part of our alcohol control agency and its state partners to craft safe alcohol regulation. I also do want to point out, you know, Director Marks mentioned that the OLCC has been working with the ADPC and OHA. That was largely because of pressure from the legislature after the home delivery situation, and they didn't hire that public health person as well until after that whole situation. So there's certainly a lot of movement happening, and I'm happy to say that we've been working with OLCC on some other bills. However, that doesn't take away from the fact that there is nobody at the decision-making table that has an understanding of how this impacts our public health system. Thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Not seeing any. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Jill Gray.
Thank you, Chair Gelsor, members of the committee. My name is Jill Gray, and I work for the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission. Unfortunately, our executive director, Dr. Richardson, had a conflict this afternoon and was unable to testify on this bill himself. But I think if he were here, he would want to remind everybody that ADPC is a state agency that is devoted to improving the effectiveness of substance use services for all Oregonians. And second, we completed a statewide strategic plan on prevention, treatment, recovery support services last year. I think one of the benefits of going, of testifying after, I think, everybody else is that many of them have already given a lot of my testimony. So let me see if I can sum this up very quickly. We agree with many of the statements that Representative Solomon, Representative Leith have already told you, and that is that alcohol policies and cannabis policies are public health matters, and that these are public health deliberations and discussions and decisions that are happening at OLCC. We believe that OLCC is an important state agency partner in implementing the strategic plan. And as Director Marks indicated, OLCC has taken a lot of really positive steps in the last several months. They hired an analyst on their staff who has a public health background, and that we have instituted a public health questionnaire. It is filled out by the Public Health Division at OHA and the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission, and we try to provide public health information on the roles that are being discussed at the commission. And thank you, Senator Lieber, for asking that question. It's still an evolving process with that public health questionnaire, but if you have any additional questions about it, please let me know, and I'm happy to talk more about it with you. But we still believe with all of these good steps occurring, that that still doesn't equate to having a commissioner with a public health background on the commission. That person would be able to communicate, deliberate with the other commissioners on the same level, they would be able to vote on items. And coming from a state agency that has a commission set up as well, I'll just say from my perspective, even when there aren't items that commissioners are voting on in our meetings, the commissioners still play a role in setting the tone and the direction of our commission. So we think that there is value in having commissioners with public health backgrounds who can provide that public health aspect to the OLCC in whatever way that is. I did have some numbers and statistics to tell this commission, but frankly, I don't know that I can do any better job than some of the other people who have already spoken, in particular Ms. Grove and Ms. McGinnis, in letting you know that there is a, there is a cost to the products and the public health aspect to alcohol and cannabis products. From Dr. Richardson, I think one of the last things he wanted to make sure that I inform everybody is that he gave a commitment to this committee to let them know when bills either support or conflict with the strategic plan. And he, as well as the rest of our commissioners, firmly believe that House Bill 2758 supports the work of the strategic plan. And with that, I hope I have said all of the relevant points in the short amount of time, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much, Jill. I really appreciate it. Any questions? Not seeing any. Thank you so much. And there is one more person, so you were almost last, but not all the way last. Our last one on this bill is Kim London.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the committee. I also want to take a moment to thank Representative Solomon for bringing this forward. My name is Kim London. I'm the executive director of the Oregon Cannabis Association. We're a member-driven organization representing cannabis businesses of all sizes from all around the state. We exist because of a belief in the legal and regulated cannabis industry, not only for Oregon's economic health, but because of a strong belief that a regulated market is our best defense we have against an unregulated and untested illegal market. I'm speaking today not just on behalf of my members, but also on behalf of my colleagues at the Oregon Retailers of Cannabis Association, Farms, Inc., and the Oregon Industry Progress Association. Together, we represent the major cannabis industry associations, working together as one to advocate for sensible growth of our industry. On behalf of our coalition, I'm speaking in support of a fair and balanced commission on the board of the OLCC, which is representative of all stakeholders affected by Oregon's legal liquor and cannabis markets. We were quite pleased by this bill's effort to provide a more holistic and inclusive voice to the commission, and we, like the bill's authors and supporters, take public health and safety very seriously for the health of our community and the strength of our industry's market. We understand the support and support the need for public health representation on the OLCC's commission. We also ask that when adding two additional seat requirements to the commission, you add a representative seat from the cannabis industry. Like Director Marks spoke to, right now, there is no representative from our industry. There is currently a requirement for a seat for the Food and Alcohol and Beverage Retail Industry Coalition, that's the language in the statute. And this commissioner provides valuable expertise and insight on the liquor industry. Adding a cannabis industry seat would bring us in parity with the liquor industry, and at the same time, and I think more importantly, would bring in industry expertise for cannabis. We are a new and ever-evolving industry. Our business practices are complex, and the OLCC needs a commissioner with an expertise voice from the industry who can advise on policy and regulations that promote the regulated industry and protect us against the dangers of an unregulated, and again, untested, illicit market. We have been grateful to Director Marks and his staff at the OLCC and the commission for their willingness to work in partnership with the industry to develop a regulatory system that protects the health and safety of all Oregonians and promotes common sense growth for our industry. Just ask once again, as you're looking to adjust the makeup of the commission, that you promote the essential industry partnership and look for, including our voice on the commission as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Thank you to Representative Solomon and Representative Leith, and everyone that brought this bill forward today and took time to come and share our stories and perspectives. We have completed this public hearing. We've got two more to go, friends. So I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 2758 and open a